Excellent. All right, I would like to call to order the January 12th meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees. Start with invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you as servants to the public and your servants in this world, Lord. We ask that you bring peace to our nation and calm the rifts that exist and that you allow each one of us to lead as you see fit and guiding our communities and our being neighborly and accepting of one another, Lord. We ask that you be with us as we make decisions in regards to our community this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 All right, it's Pledge of Allegiance. We have a flying flag here, so would you like to join me in the pledge? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God.
Indemnisable with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. All right, thanks everybody. Roll call vote. Ms. Manley.
Chick.
Here.
Otto.
Janet Chick, Northfield Township, Michigan. Sorry.
Good catch. Um, Otto.
Jackie Otto, Northfield, Michigan.
Nelson.
Joshua Nelson, Northfield Township, Michigan.
Moko.
Uh, here, name Moko, Northfield Township, Michigan.
Manley, Kathy Manley here, Northfield Township, Michigan. Lenore, right, Zelenak.
Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Dignan.
Ken Dignan from Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Oh, here.
All right. Just so the public knows that in accordance with the Open Meetings Act as amended by Senate Bill 1246, which allows us to have virtual meetings for any reason good through March 30th, 2021. And of course, this is in accordance with the MDHHS order, which was issued a state of emergency for Michigan. When the public body casts its first vote, they are asking that we, each member of this public body in attendance when casting their first vote also just reiterate that you are participating remotely. And again, your county, city, state and such in which you, where you are attending. I know we just stated that, but through MTA today, they said when you cast your first vote, to please make sure you do that. So we'll make sure we do that when we go forward. So moving on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda for a Northfield Township meeting, January 12th, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion by Chick and supported by Nelson. You know, I want to point one quick thing out. One, you know, we are having mental health calls. That's not a surprise. Notice that in the reports. You know, to look out for your neighbors, be there, see if you can. And I noticed that seven residents have improved their properties in December, including two brand new homes. So I think that's worth pulling attention to. So with that, does anyone have any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Ms. Manley, and don't forget your county, city and state there where you're from or where you're at.
For each vote?
Just for the first vote you make of the night.
Okay. Moko.
Uh, yes, name Moko, Northfield Township.
Manley, yes. Kathy Manley, Northfield Township, Michigan. Dignan?
Yes, Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Otto.
Yes, Jackie Otto, Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Chick.
Janet Chick, yes. Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Nelson?
Yes, Joshua Nelson, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Zelenak?
Zelenak, yes. Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Seven zero.
All right, just by the time we get this thing down, it's going to be back to meeting person. Yeah. So the next item on the agenda is adopting the balance of the agenda. What I would like to do, if there's no objection, is take New Business Discussion, Item One, McKenna Associates' presentation of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And I would like to move that up to just after correspondence as our first item. I, let's put it on there as presentation before old business. Because I believe our planner is on, let me see if, yes. And gonna, or Natalie's on, I'm gonna present on that. That's the only modification I have to the agenda. Are there any others? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any questions on the?
Yeah, there's discussion. So I don't like moving agenda items. I don't think, you know, it's a good, good policy. So I will be voting no on that.
Okay.
I appreciate the need, you know, the desire to move it, but I think that should
I was moving it out of a sense of budget so that we weren't spending the money watching us.
Understand.
I apologize. In hindsight, it should have been a presentation at the beginning and I missed that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Hey, Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Six one.
Next is petitions and communications comments from the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? If you could raise your hand at this time? Okay. Ms. Pritchett, you've been, I've unmuted you. You should be able to speak now.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. It's Marissa Pritchett, 32 Shum Drive, Northfield Township, Michigan. Just a couple of quick things today. I noticed on the agenda that there is a discussion about selling a portion of the North Village property to Eldente. And the last I heard, the last I remember being updated about that, the board had decided that it came here prematurely and that they needed to know what was going on with Levonia Builders before making a choice like that. So I guess if something has changed since then, I'm not aware of it. So I would like clarification on that, please. And the other thing is I wanted to make note of the agenda item request form that I keep seeing in the board packets. I know that Supervisor Dignan presented the idea for it at his first official board meeting, and I think that it's great. However, I could not locate it online. When I, when I searched for it on the township website, I was only able to find it inside of board packets that already existed. So if that's something that you're planning to utilize for the public or for committees, for example, that should be something that is easy and accessible to find. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Seeing none, move on. Board member comments. On the Eldente form, we were off, or we were submitted a request from them to consider the sale of property when the township's presented with that. We have a certain obligation to look at and consider it. It doesn't mean we have to do anything other than that. But we're going to have some discussion, I think, about the park and then North Village as well tonight that might clarify that. And the form will be online. We're working on creating the PDF version that can be typed out. We may tap Ms. Otto for some help on that because I know she, she offered. So we'll do that. I don't have any other clarifications. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none others, we'll go to correspondence there.
Sorry, Ken.
No.
Mr. Supervisor, did we approve the minutes?
Not yet.
I don't, I don't recall that. Was that not after roll call?
Completely missed it. Thank you for calling attention to that. We could go back.
You're welcome.
Go back to that before we go to correspondence then. The minutes from December 17th, 2020 special meeting. Does anyone have any feedback? If not, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, is that your motion, Mr. Dignan?
I was gonna make that motion to approve the minutes of December 17th, 2020 special meeting as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, support by Otto. Any questions on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Nope, nope. So, hold on, Ken.
Go ahead, Ms. Manley.
Supervisor Dignan, I sent one change to, I think you and Jennifer, as well as Ms. Carlyle and Ms. Strains.
Yes.
Do you recall that? Okay, so that'll be corrected?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the change was the spelling on page two of Tammy's.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Manley, will you please call the roll?
So.
I don't think.
That must be me.
Yeah, I think it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I approve.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. So next is the People's Express Quarterly Report. Ms. Zelenak, would you like to speak to that or?
This is a quarterly report that we put in at the request of the board. And it shows just the up to date quarter of the rides that we have provided. And you can see that we have increased over year over year. Is there any specific questions on that?
I, I would have to imagine, Ms. Zelenak, this is Supervisor Dignan, that the demand is, is just ever more great right now. I mean, and getting greater. Do you know? I'm trying, I don't have it right here. I mean, have you guys seen a trend going more inside the township than outside the township? Because I know that there, you guys have looked at that over years, but in this past year, has it trended more to be in internal or outside?
Well, according to the statistics, it's internal and we are delivering food to people. So that is part of the, as opposed to having them come to the center. So that is a little bit of the driver. And so that's part of the information.
I think it's really important for us to understand that and, you know, what a, what a service People's Express is to our community and, you know, far reaching than more than just transportation right now, clearly.
That, that's very true, actually. It is reaching farther than just the transportation.
Yes. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment that, and I will every year, how much I appreciate People's Express service. I've come to know some of the people that actually work for them and they're all wonderful. Cannot praise them enough for the work that they do for the people of the township and anybody that needs them. So I appreciate them very much.
I do too.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And if I may just add, you know, my mother was Wiltshire bound for five years and I don't live in Northfield, or she didn't live in Northfield Township. And to get transportation for her was a nightmare. It truly was and expensive. We had to go to a doctor's trip and it was $90. They were late. And then after we were finished, it took three hours before they picked us up. And so having a service, and she lived in Allen Park, and Allen Park has something similar to People's Express where they just do what they only do inside. And that was very similar. It was a dollar for her to go anywhere in Allen Park and just the difference between the service and the availability. And it was, it's amazing. So as people know, I'm on the board. I think it's a tremendous asset to the township and to the residents to be able to assist, especially when you have a need. And when you have some impairments that you can't just get in the car and go.
Ms. Zelenak, do you know, do they keep demographic data where they could look back and, and speak to the age demographic of their, of their ridership or anything to that effect? I mean, I wouldn't want them to create some. I just wondered if that's data that they keep at all. Because I think people would.
I do not know that, Mr. Right, Mr. Anderson might be able to answer that.
I think people would be surprised that there's a wide gamut of demographic ages that, that utilize the service.
That's correct. It's not, you know, as you can see, we call more of the regular is, you know, not falling into the senior. So yes, that's a good portion of the business.
Okay, well, we appreciate the quarterly report and the data that you have there as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Otto?
I just want to tell People Express thank you for all the work that they've done. I know when, six years ago, when we initially considered doing this, there was a lot of skepticism about if it was even going to be used. And we see year after year how much people have been using it within the township. So it really truly has been a great investment for our community.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments in regards to the quarterly report, we'll move on to Ms. Bond and McKenna to discuss the draft Parks and Rec Master Plan. Are you there, Natalie?
Yep, I'm here, Ken. Thank you. One second. I'm trying to figure out how to share my screen. All right, it looks like I have. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Natalie Bond. So I have been working on the Northfield Township Parks and Recreation Master Plan with McKenna. And tonight I'm going to give you just a short presentation overview on, you know, sort of what the plan is, the purpose of it, and leave some time for discussion. So I'm going to go ahead and screen share. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Oh, there we go. Okay. So I just wanted to start by giving a little bit of the background of, you know, why do communities do Parks and Recreation Master Plans? The reason that communities do this is to be eligible for Michigan Department of Natural Resources grants and other funds that can be given to communities in order to better recreation facilities. This, this is very critical for parks acquisition and improvement projects. So that, that's the main reason why we do this plan. So this is just a little overview of the sections of the plan. So there's a, there's a specific order that the DNR likes to see. And at McKenna, excuse me, at McKenna, we always make sure to follow the DNR guidelines since that is who we will be submitting the plan to come February 1st. But they give you specific sections that they ask you to include within the plan. And they include a community snapshot. So this will give key information about the township, such as demographics, you know, what type of community that we are. And it allows the township to gauge current parks and recreation needs based upon trends and needs identified within that demographic data. And then an analysis of the existing facilities and resources that the township has, a community vision. And this provides the background for the goals and objectives identified in, in the action plan. So the action plan then lists each of the proposed projects, and it also provides estimated timelines and costs and potential funding sources that would pay for those projects that the township has decided on. So the public engagement that we were able to do this, this past year in 2020 was pretty different than how we would normally like to do it. And McKenna, we like to do a lot of in-person public engagement just because it gives you a lot more than you usually would get through a screen. But unfortunately, you know, with, with COVID, we weren't able to do that. But we did do a survey, which was well responded to. And the survey, it had about 300 responses, but in order to prevent multiple submissions, duplicate submissions, or, you know, people using a different computer to take the survey, we had a question in there that had everybody put in their name and address. And if they were not, if they didn't fill out that question, their survey was disposed. And that was put in a disclosure at the beginning of the survey, just so we could, we could stop that before it, before it started. So. Okay, so some of the key results that we got from the survey included that major themes we identified and things that are very important to our community members. Those came to be natural features preservation, lakefront access and preservation, connectivity within the Northfield community, greater safety and walkability, fiscal conservation, and then township pride for assets and resources. So within the plan, we identified five priority projects that are, are projects that we'd like to see happen more immediate than long-term within the township. And these five priority projects include creating awareness of available parks and recreation facilities and creating a volunteer system and database. That largely is because we would like to, you know, advertise more for what types of recreation we have in the Northfield community. And also because we had such a large response for people that would like to volunteer. We would like to get that more organized and actually have a system in which, you know, the volunteers could go to so they could keep coming back. And it just becomes a more organized system. So for the Northfield Community Park and Lakefront amenities, we'd like to implement different recreational facilities for the North Village site. And definitely we want to keep that in line with the North Village plan that was previously written. Thirdly, to begin development of the Northfield Township Community Park based upon that park design and project plan. And then create a border to border loop trail linking the trails surrounding North Village site to the Mike Levine State Trail. And then lastly, creating a river walk in the Horseshoe Lake Drain area near the Jennings Road Athletic Complex. So those were some of the things that the public and the Parks and Recreation Board found to be projects that we could do more immediately rather than long-term. So this is a snippet from the actual draft plan, and this is the action plan. The action plan identifies the projects that we would like to implement in Northfield Township for recreational facilities long-term. While some of them are near-term and then some of them are long-term projects. And within the action plan and the plan, we identify when these projects would be happening and how much they would cost and the groups or organizations or stakeholders that the township would be able to work with in order to provide funding for the project. So the action plan is basically lays out and gives the township a guide and keeps everybody on track for what projects are going to happen now and in the future. So timeline, with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, everything needs to be submitted to the DNR by February 1st, 2021. With that being said, the steps to get there from now until that deadline will include taking the plan to the Planning Commission. They aren't required by the MDNR to give a motion of approval on that, but it is nice, you know, to have them on board, to have their blessing because, you know, we need them to be a part of the process as well. Then on the 20th, or the 26th, I'm sorry, it says the 28th on here. But the 26th is the date of the Board of Trustees meeting in which we will need approval of the plan. So for today, this is just a discussion. We do have the draft plan online as a link. And that's accessible to anyone. Any member of the public can send us comments or questions or edits. And that has been up there since December 27th. That is a required deadline issued by the State of Michigan through the MDNR that you must have a copy of the plan publicly available one month before it, before you submit to them. So the most updated draft that we have, which will include a lot of new updates and comments from Board of Trustees members, planning commissioners, and then some folks on the Parks Board as well. That is going to be uploaded on the township's website on Thursday, January 14th, so this week. And then that will be the final draft version with everybody's comments that we've received up until this point implemented. So before the January 26th meeting, that is the next board meeting, we do recommend that, you know, board members review the most recent draft of the plan, and that will be up on the township website via a link this Thursday. You guys are more than welcome to send any revisions or any comments or anything up until the adoption meeting on the 26th. And we'd be happy to have those. We've gotten some so far and we've implemented those. So we're excited to, to see more. And now I definitely want to open it up for any questions or comments or anything. I know that Jackie also wanted to jump in. So Jackie, I'll, I'll let you take it from here and then maybe we could do questions.
Okay. The one thing that I wanted to stress is, you know, in Natalie's presentation, is that that our submission does have to be given to DNR by the first. Doesn't mean that we're applying for grants. All it means is that we're applying for the opportunity to apply for grants. That's really all that means. The grants don't start until April 1st, but this is a, this is a preview of their requirement just so we can get it into my rec grants by February 1st. So in reviewing the guidelines for the DNR five-year plan, inventory of the parks and recreation facilities is a, is a required segment. And the inventory can be detailed as useful to you to contain some of the following information such as the park name, the size in acres, the length of the park, description and general purpose of the use, and also the services in that area. But as I was going over, as we were going through the master plan for Northfield Township Community Park, we don't have a size. It's called TBD, to be determined. And this weekend I was working on the plan, looking at the guidelines and everything, making sure that we had everything in sync. And I started becoming not comfortable with not having that description for a number of reasons. Mainly because the majority of our grants that we're going to be applying for will focus on this park and the lakefront venue at North Village. And I thought we need to have a size in this extra plan. We can't submit it without a size. And I think it's very vital that we do. What I would like to propose is that I make a motion. If anybody doesn't object, I will go ahead and just make the motion and then we can have a discussion after that if everyone's okay with that.
Okay, good.
So I would like to make the motion that the size of the park, which includes the lakefront, the park, the parking and trail within Northfield Township Community Park that is located in North Village, will be no larger. that is located in North Village, will be no larger than 12 acres and no smaller than 10 acres, providing approximately 50% for park development.
I support.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Otto. It has been supported by Chick. Discussion on the motion. I want to provide to the board a, a small bit of clarity. I did receive a call from Danny at Livonia Builders the other, yesterday. Very brief casual conversation. And what I got from that call is he is still interested in Northfield Township. He would really like to do a project there, a smaller project than initially was discussed. Was something that was more appealing to him. And, you know, he said something to the tune of about 50 homes. I think he probably was tuned in over the course of the last four or five months in hearing that the public really wanted to preserve more of the park and everything. So I think this is a great motion. I think it fits in well and I think it will really set for Livonia Builders what is expected. This is the, because that I think was the biggest question is he didn't know. He didn't know what was going to work, what wasn't going to work. And this will allow the township manager and the attorney to work with him. If he is who we indeed decide to work with as a township, to, to come to some sort of understanding and agreement and a purchase price or whatever. But I, I think it's important for the park. I think it's important for any development, including the commercial sites down there. And it's important for us to be able to start investing in our park assets that, that we do this. So I thank Ms. Otto for bringing it forward. Anyone else have comments? Yes, Ms. Zelenak?
So my comment is, I think certainly it's a lot better than a motion that was passed in the prior board of five acres. And it's almost half if we go up to 12, including all that. We still do need to reach out to the public, obviously, and let them know. So my question is, I mean, I think it's a good motion to start. It can be changed possibly if there is a lot of objection from the public. Would that be a correct statement?
Well, I mean, I guess anything can be, anything this board does can be changed.
All right, I just, so I, I do think we had indicated that we would, you know, reach out to a public, the public in a more so than our, our typical fashion of, you know, putting it in electronic form, be it in the newsletter, the one that goes out to people that have emails and stuff like that. So I just want to make sure that we do follow through with that part of it. That we do reach out to the public and let them know and get their input as well.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenak. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I don't want to go off topic, but since Ms. Zelenak brought it up, I was actually going to make a motion about she and I have been working on a communication plan for months and we got sidetracked because of COVID. And we'd like to finish that and get that going and get postcards sent out to the public to advise them of the motion tonight and what the consideration is for that area. That's all I had.
All right. Yeah, I, I think it's important as we start to go down that path of especially developing a park. You know, that, that, that's, you know, we needed parameters for obviously the plan and for applications for grants. But also, we need to have that public communication for understanding the uses of that park area. Yes, Ms. Chick?
I, I'm sorry, I just have one more thing. I think it's important too that the people, I know there are some that want the whole area as recreational, but it's in our master plan that's on mixed use. So unless somebody changes the master plan, it's, it's mixed use. It can't be all recreational.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, Ms. Manley, would you call the roll?
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Going to make our master plan look a lot better.
For sure. All right, moving on, the next item on our agenda is old business. I'm going to make a motion to affirm.
Oops, are we off, ma'am, or ma'am, Mr. Supervisor?
I guess the question is, do we, do we have more things for Natalie? I apologize. Ms. Bond, appreciate you being here. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Bond about the process, the timeframe, the content? Send her an email.
I just have a question. I just had a question. So there was, was there 300 responses or did I read there was like 225 in the plan?
Yep, so there was about 300 responses in the raw data. But like we said, we had to implement some quality control measures in order for there not to be duplicate survey respondents. So with, after taking those surveys out, the duplicate ones, there was 225.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good to know.
All right.
And then, yeah, if anybody has anything else that they can't think of right now, but you would like to email me. I don't know if everybody has my email address.
We'll make sure they do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll make sure they do. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Natalie.
Good night.
Good night.
Sorry about that, guys. So moving on, I'll make a motion to affirm the board member representatives and committee appointments for the Board of Trustees to various other boards that we settled on at a previous meeting.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Zelenak. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll again?
Moko?
I approve.
Nelson?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the appointments for boards and commissions for various entities within the township. The only one that came truly with my recommendation was the Planning Commission, which the supervisor has the right to, to name someone and then have the board consider and give their consent. The others were filled in basically by applicants that we had. We still are actually short a couple people on the Board of Review. We're short a few people on the DDA. We're short a few people on the Watershed, we, here on River Watershed Council. I think we still are one short on LP, or two short on the land preservation, but I believe a communication came across from them stating that the, they had some recommendations. So the, the first, do we want to take each individual person? For each position?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Does anyone, if, before I start down that path, does anyone have any questions? Okay, so I would like to make.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
Any of these individuals, have they been contacted and did they agree to be part of that?
Every person here has, every person here has been contacted and agreed to be a part of those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Recent, yep. The first is the reappointment of Scott Chisholm to the Board of Review. I'll make a motion to appoint Scott Chisholm to the Board of Review with his term expiring December 2022.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Zelenak. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep, Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to appoint LJ Walter to the Board of Review, term ending December 2022.
Support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you please call the roll?
Yep, Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. Next, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vicki Higgins to the Board of Review, term expiring December 2022.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you please call the roll?
Uh, Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
I do want to make one comment. Mr. Walter, being one of the newer members of our community and Ms. Higgins having been here for a couple decades, it, it's exciting to see people that have been here a long time getting active and involved. And it's great to see new folks getting active and involved. I was excited to speak to both of them and you know, look forward to their engagement in the community. It, it's great to see. I, I actually take back an earlier statement. I also am recommending John Zarzaki remain on the Planning Commission. So that's my next motion is that John Zarzaki be reappointed to the Planning Commission, this term expiring December 2023.
I'll support that.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next person is, I would like to make a motion to appoint Scott Gustafson to the Planning Commission for term expiring December 2023. I've served with Mr. Gustafson on the Zoning Board of Appeals and look forward to him and his knowledge being beneficial to the Planning Commission.
I'll support. Recommend him.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep, Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, next individual, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Adam Olney to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the term expiring December 2021. So he is filling the position that was previously held by Scott Gustafson.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep, Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Rachel Smith to the Zoning Board of Appeals with term ending December 2023.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep, Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Nelson? Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. Next, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint James Balsili to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate, term expiring December 2023.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep, Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Julie Henshaw to the Land Preservation Committee, term expiring December 2023.
I'll support.
Oh, never mind.
Motion by Dignan, support by Zelenak?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Zelenak, yes?
So there will be, Julia, Ms. Henshaw has been there, there since the inception. And right now she's staying on and she, once we get another replacement or another person, she mostly will replace her. But she will continue to participate and be a member until we find a, a person, a qualified person. So I just want to let people know that.
Thank you, Julia.
Excellent. Okay, motion by Dignan, support by Zelenak. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
I think that's everybody, seven zero.
Okay. Next, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marissa Prisgen to the Huron River Watershed Council, term expiring December 2022.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Yeah, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next, maybe a name that sounds familiar. I spoke with Mr. LJ Walter and felt that with his field of work and mutual interest that we've never had an alternate to the Washington County Broadband Task Force, although they do allow for that and ask that you have one. And I thought that Mr. Walter and I could serve together on that very well. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint LJ Walter to the Washington County Broadband Task Force as an alternate, term expiring December 2022.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, support by Otto. Any discussion on the motion?
Good choice.
Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep, Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. And finally, there's a name here that you all, I'm sure, are familiar with. She has graciously offered to serve as an alternate on the Washington County Urban County Executive Committee. I would like to make a motion to appoint Marta Larson as the alternate with term expiring December 2022.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Any questions on the motion? I will note that if some of you do not know, Ms. Larson has served this community for decades. Planning Commission, Board of Trustees for years. And health equity, she's, she's just been a, a real champion for a, a lot of things in Northfield Township. And we're grateful to have her, so. Any questions? None, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep. Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Otto?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, guys, thank you. The, it, it is, I'm so happy with, you know, we've got five new faces getting involved in, in township government. I'm excited about that. Very grateful to those that are going to continue to serve. I will remind folks that we do have two openings for alternates on the Board of Review. The Board of Review is a commitment of a few days a year. But it's a very important role. We also, as I said, I, there is an opening for an alternate on the Huron River Watershed Council. But it's a very important role. Uh, we also, as I said, uh, I, there is an opening for an alternate on the Huron River Watershed Council. Uh, and if you're a business owner in the, in the DDA district, there's an opening on the DDA right now. I'd like to thank this board for, uh, putting forward quite a, a, a great list of, uh, individuals that will continue to serve this township well. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the ethics policy.
Oh.
Oh, did we have a? And, uh, this was at the request of Ms. Zelenak, just to be brought forward so that we could, uh, be refreshed on it, I believe. Ms. Zelenak, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, this was a, a policy approved by the last administration. So I actually would like to have the ethics policy approved by this administration. Um, everybody had an opportunity to read it as it's in your packet, so I will actually make a motion that, uh, that we approve the ethic policy as presented.
I'll support.
Motion by Zelenak and a support by Otto to adopt the Northfield Township Ethics Policy. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Moko?
I think it's, uh, great that we all approve it or whatnot, but, uh, I think we all ought to sign it also. That's common practice with ethics, ethics, uh, you know.
Amendments.
I agree that that's, that I've seen that in other communities as well. You know, and, uh, you know.
Is that a friendly, uh, amendment?
Certainly, Ms. Zelenak.
Uh, so would you like to make an amendment, um, Ms. Moko, Mr. Moko?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just, I just feel it's common practice in, in the, the business world that when you have a code of ethics, everybody, all employees, sign it. So, uh, as servants of the community, we, we all ought to sign it. I mean, I, you can't argue. It, I would say, you know, I approve of what you got going on. So.
Can I ask a point of clarification really quick? Um, is this a board ethics policy or a Northfield Township ethics policy?
Board.
It was a board.
Board.
It should say Northfield Township Board of Trustees Ethics Policy. Um, I agree with Mr. Moko. Uh, I will take that as a, uh, I mean, if, if Ms. Zelenak is willing to accept that.
Yes. I am.
Well, can we just sign the copy that we got and bring it into the office? Is that how you want to do it?
No, there should be a copy in the office that one, that I'd like one copy we all sign.
Perfect.
And then scan it in and put it on the, on the website.
Awesome.
Right.
Um, and I can drive that around everybody if we need to. Uh, I think it's a good idea, uh, a reminder to the board, the, uh, board policies are the way that we as individuals, uh, this board agreed to treat each other and to, to conduct business. It's, it's excellent. I think this is a great thing to have. I think it's important that we, we, you know, keep this at front of our minds. You know, that we always treat each other decently and respectfully. I think that's just, you know, things that you would think would be a given, but, you know, it, 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 it is important for, uh, if you ever do have that moment where you can refer back to it and remind, uh, each other that th- this is a document we all agreed to be, uh, operate by. So I, I think it's great. I'm happy with, uh, the, the presentation of it, and I'm glad that was brought back up. Is there, uh, any other discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms. Otto?
I just want to give, um, a brief background that, uh, Kathy and I did, uh, draft the ethics policy initially. We used, um, several, um, municipalities as well as the, um, uh, the Michigan Township Association recommendations. And so, um, I know as the backup, Nor put a lot of work into reviewing it and everything and, uh, provided a lot of comments on this when we initially, uh, considered this, uh, policy. So, um, I appreciate everybody, all their work initially on the previous board that even Janet of what we put into it, and, and none of these, uh, things were taken lightly. They were all very thought out of how we were approached, uh, every, you know, how we approach business, how we approach each other ethically.
Absolutely. All right. If there's no other comment, I'll ask Ms. Manley to call the roll.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Next item, we'll move on to new business. Uh, first item under new business is the consideration of the renewal of the People's Express contract. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, continue the, uh, contract with People's Express in the amount of $10,000 for the duration of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Support.
Motion by Dignan, support by Chick. Discussion on the motion. Yes, Ms. Otto?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay.
We have had this contract for over six years, and every year we have to, um, every year we have to, uh, renew it. And I think that either we put in a multi-year contract or we make it an evergreen contract. And if we do make it an evergreen contract, then there does need to have contract language in there. And, and if others don't understand what evergreen means, it means it's a repeating renewable contract every year.
Unless proper notice is given.
Yeah, we should have term termination limits in there, like a 30-day notice for either party for term in the agreement and then, uh, make, and make sure that we have the continued requirement of having quarterly reports like we do. This way, it, it just automatically becomes part of our budget each year, and we don't have to question it.
Unless they ask for more money.
Unless they ask for more money.
Right.
And that, maybe, maybe next year, depending on things, that could be the case.
There you go.
Well, and, and, and what, what I would ask is, uh, that we agree, that we adopt this contract, and that we draft a contract, uh, of that sort, or People's Express does. The, the two things, uh, one, the evergreen clause, but two is if there is a request for, uh, additional funds, when that has to be notified by and, and, and whether we have to, you know, it, it, it's, I think we can definitely do something like that. I, I would be happy, uh, to work with Ms. Zelenak and the People's Express, uh, Board to, to bring something like that back to this board.
Okay.
If, if that is something that the board is agreeable to.
So, so you're asking us to approve this if, if we approve it tonight, and then you'll bring back another contract when it is written differently?
Yeah, yeah. That would, that would just be for, right, going forward.
Okay.
So you don't have to, so can, you would not have to, um, you, we could put this contract into effect. We necessarily have to renew the contract. We can amend the contract to be evergreen.
Right.
So that's probably what Mr. thinks.
Put an addendum on the back that says this is, yep, that's easiest, cheapest.
That would be cheaper to do.
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. All right. Are there any other questions on the contract? Ms. Zelenak, did you have anything to add?
I, I do not. Um, I will just add that I will not be, I will be abstaining on it as I, as people know, I am a member of the People's Express Board. I do appreciate the board's support.
Absolutely.
Fabulous to see. Thank you very much.
Excellent. With that, then I.
Mr. Anderson, are you, are you on, online, Mr. Anderson?
Let's see.
I think he is. Yep, I see him.
Uh, hang on. Mr. Anderson, are you there? Uh, you're muted. Let's see, ask to unmute. May not be able to get him.
Okay. Anyway, I was just going to take the opportunity to introduce Mr. Anderson to the board and for the people that may not, um, know him. And then I was going to ask about the demographics. We have, uh, ages. More of a break time, which I do believe we do, as we don't usually, um.
Now, there he is.
There he is.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm in the dark. I'm doing okay.
Excellent. Excellent. Well.
So I was just going to introduce, um, you, Mr. Anderson, to the rest of the board members so that they know who you are. Um, and then there was one question, and I don't know if you heard it about the demographics, and right now we do regular and we do senior and, um, senior handicap. Do we actually keep it more detailed number, um, by age group at all?
No, that's something we've, uh, never done, and, uh, we count seniors, uh, at, at 55 and up. Uh, but it's the, it's the driver's discretion. We really don't ask people their age and, uh,
Okay.
and that, and that's really what it comes down to. That's sort of a, MDOT's more or less going to that, you know?
Okay.
Right.
All right. That was it?
Cool.
Well, we got you in the hot seat now. We're getting ready to approve your contract. So, Mr. Moko, go ahead. You're muted.
Yeah, hi. Uh, Doug, I was just wondering, uh, if you could speak to, you know, the people of Whitmore a little bit about, you know, that's $10,000 is a lot, um, but the, the fact that it's matched in federal funds, and then there's other townships or cities surrounding us, uh, that, that do contribute. So we're not the only ones contributing. I just, I just, I learned a lot about it today from Lenore especially. And, uh, and with seeing the stats, I think it's a, it's a great program. I just wondered if you could give us kind of a bird's eye view, uh, for people who might not know as much about People Express.
Well, uh, I, I, we're, we're actually a tri-county, uh, agency a- anymore. Uh, we were, we started up, uh, 20-some years ago, uh, as a program for Northfield Human Service. And, uh, we started getting bigger and bigger until MDOT made us, um, split up and make our own agency, and it's a corporation. It's in a 501(c)(3). It's a total nonprofit. And we, we do, uh, contracts and agreements with the surrounding areas such as South Lyon, the city, South Lyon, the township, uh, uh, Milford. Uh, we have contracts with, uh, Commerce Township and with Wicksum Township and Senior Center. And, uh, we have, uh, township, we have contracts with the City of Saline. And we also have, uh, this year, we got a contract agreement with, uh, Livingston County. And, uh, because a lot of people were, uh, were coming here and didn't, and, and they don't go across county lines because they're a county, uh, or, organization. And, uh, we do. And so we take people into Livingston County, into Brighton, into things. And, uh, the 5311 money that you were alluding to, uh, the match money type thing, uh, is, uh, I, I'm going to be getting, we're going to be getting that, uh, this, this year, obviously. Uh, so we will be, we were going to be talking to you about, uh, maybe raising it up. So we would have match money to get, because we will be bringing at least the same, uh, 10 to $20,000 in, uh, to community, uh, for people wanting to go to and from, because now there's a lot of hospitals in Brighton area, in the Brighton area and Hall area, that people would rather go to than, uh, than Ann Arbor, to be real truthful with you. So, uh, that's what we do in a nutshell. Uh, we take care of, uh, of business. We actually, uh, our last year, uh, something that we did not foresee, and neither did anybody else in the world anyway, all the different things that went off with COVID. But, uh, we were asked by the state not to collect fares. So, uh, the $7 ride, uh, you guys actually pay for, uh, and the, you know, and the farthest one is like, uh, if we're going to the south side of Ann Arbor, that would cost the, uh, what your resident's $7. We didn't even collect that for, uh, the, up until last, uh, this month, we started collecting fares again. So, uh, we're, anyway, we're, uh, we're doing our part, and we're nonprofit, and we keep on track with that. In fact, right now, I'm zoomed into a, uh, auction, so I can buy some stuff at an auction, because it's cheaper than buying it over, over the counter. And, uh, that's what we do. Uh, so any, uh, questions? Anything you need to know?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, did I explain?
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, cool.
I will just say this, folks, is, is this is no small-time transportation entity. People's Express is big time, and I'm very, we're very lucky to have them here in the community, and, uh, the work they do is ever more important. And as we heard earlier, uh, they're doing a lot more in township, uh, business now, and I think.
Yes, it's sort of reversing. The roles are reversing a little. And that's, and that's good. That's a good thing. That's what we want to try to do. I mean, John is taking people to colleagues than to Myers, but, you know, we're still taking them to Myers, too.
I know. But I have no problem for, further supporting, uh, People's Express. Great program, so. All right. Any other?
Just like to add one thing, um, Mr. Supervisor, is you, you mentioned about having it in our community. Mr. Anderson was very adamant that we stay in our community, both with the food pantry being Northfield Human Services and as well as the PEX. You know, there was some little difficulty finding property and all, and, and information, and stuff like that. But, um, Mr. Anderson was very adamant that we support Northfield Human Services as well as People Express, and that we stay in the community. Obviously, being a nonprofit, we don't, um, pay taxes, property taxes. However, I think the benefit of having the people here in our community outweighs that.
I would agree.
He was, Mr. Anderson was very adamant to keep the businesses here.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you.
About the only thing I could, I, I'd like to add one more thing. As long as you're saying stuff, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll tell you the one thing that, uh, we, you're right, we don't pay taxes. But what we do is we have 40 employees, and out of that 40 employees, uh, more, 60% of them are from this community, are from Northfield Township. So, uh, you know, it's not like, you know, we just go on and try to get all, you know, people that need jobs and, and, uh, work for less and all that. We, uh, hire from within, and, uh, and that's the way we are. We started out here. And, uh, some, uh, some people that are not with us anymore started this. They all lived in Northfield. I lived in Northfield at the time. And, uh, and, you know, so that's why we wanted to stay. So.
And, and, and I can't say enough how much, uh, we appreciate that and, uh, how much I, I, I see People's Express supporting other local businesses in town, uh, whether it's, uh, their, you know, their, their staff grabbing coffee or, uh, you know, bringing in, uh, lunch or something. They, 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 they do support our other businesses. So the, the impact is significant. Beyond just the, the, the transportation they provide. So, all right, with, uh, if there is nothing else, I'll ask Ms. Manley, uh, to call the roll on that?
Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Um, Dignan?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
And Zelenak is abstaining. So six, zero.
Excellent. There you are, Mr. Anderson. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the budget amendments for, uh, 2020, 2021. Uh, it's Resolution 21635. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 21635.
I'll support.
A motion by Dignan, support by Otto. Any questions on the motion? Any questions on the, uh, adjustments and amendments?
Well, thanks, Yvette.
Yeah, thank you, Yvette.
Yes.
Could I make a comment, uh, Mr. Dignan?
Absolutely, Ms. Rains.
Originally, with the beginning of the year, we expected to do this quarterly, but with the audit taking a lot longer because of the, uh, long distance, took a lot more time and effort by, uh, Yvette. She did a good job. She worked very hard with it. Uh, took a lot more time and effort by uh Yvette. She did a good job. She worked very hard with it. Uh, but she just couldn't do everything at once. So what she's recommending is that this would be the amendment as of the middle of the year. But then we'd come back with one in February that would expand other uh departments as well. And then we come back in March and then from March, we go into that quarterly uh progression again.
Okay.
Okay, I, I can understand that. Ms. Starbuck is online here. If anyone has any questions, um, I, I'm imagining this does not. Does this take into account the flooring grant for the community center? I don't think it does on the revenue side.
I didn't see it.
No, I didn't see it either. Um, okay. Yeah, cause I'm hoping that in the end that seventy-four is a little bit less, but we'll see how it ends up. Cause obviously there's pending revenue.
Oh, I would say um in the next round of amendments, you'll see a little uh more clarity in grants. Um, we have a lot of movement uh with our grant revenue and then also with the new uh wastewater treatment plant fund. Um, you'll see the creation of that new fund. Uh, so there's a, there's a lot of changes that have taken place in the, in the last six months. That uh I'm still working on, so.
Excellent. Thank you for all your hard work. We really do appreciate it. Awesome. All right, any other questions on the, on the resolution? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the role?
Manley, yes. Check.
Yes.
Zelenak.
She's off for some reason.
Okay, welcome back. Otto.
Yes.
Dignan.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
So, six zero.
Hang on, Ms. Zelenak is, I've just promoted her to panelist, so let's see. I don't know what happened there.
Oh, there she is.
I, 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 okay, am I unmuted now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we got you.
I don't, so I, I do vote yes. I was trying to raise my hand and make a comment. Um. And I think Mr. Supervisor, we have kind of communicated, we made a lot of adjustments as you can. I mean, even if you look at just the salary, I mean, you think, okay, we're gonna give raises. Well, there's a lot involved with that. And as Ms. Starbuck has said about the grants, um flooring. We made um motions for drains. I actually think there could be another forty thousand dollars out there. So I do appreciate Mr. Dignan, your form. And I just ask that we have discipline and make sure we complete that from the financial aspect. Uh, what fund is it coming out? What account is it coming out of? Is it in the budget? Um, any documentation that can be provided, cause that would really help. Cause I think to me this year highlighted, cause we made a lot of changes after the budget. That we need a more disciplined process to help Ms. Starbuck along the way. So that she's not having to revisit all the minute. So I do like the form. I just encourage people and from a process perspective, both you, Ms. Ains, and you, Mr. Dignan. When you get it, to make sure people are disciplined. And it might involve um talking to Ms. Starbuck to complete the form. To make sure you get the right accounting information in it. But I think that's very helpful. Because this is just the start of the adjustments, I think. You know, I don't know if all the stuff that we, all the improvements we did at Fire Station Two, was that in the budget? Or will Miss Patrick have to make budget amendments for that? So there was a lot that happened for the last six months. So that, that was my comment and I vote yes. And I don't know what happened to me.
I don't know either, but we welcome you back. So, Ms. Manley, does that make that seven zero now?
Yes, yes, seven zero.
Excellent. Ms. Starbuck, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Hi, Yvette.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is the uh discussion in regards to Al Dente Pasta. So uh, as you know, this had come to the board previously. Um, we did get a written request from Mr. Duchaine. A formal request in regards to purchasing the property. Uh, when he inquired with the township, Mr. Ains and uh myself, I, I joined Mr. Ains to go. And we went out there and walked the property with Mr. Duchaine and had a discussion with him. And uh regards to what he's trying to do. And uh it comes down to a couple different things. I just want to give the board a little background. And um, in this economy, uh, businesses, you know, are trying to adjust. And he has brought on partners, uh, and he's doing some international pasta making and stuff. And needs to bring that in-house uh here to do some more here domestically. Uh, his partners have said you either need to expand there or move. Uh, the move was to the northeast, uh, the Novi area, I believe, is what he had said to us when we were talking. Uh, or he needs to expand. Um, I do not believe this is ready for any action tonight. Uh, I wanted it to have it on, I, I meant to put it under discussion items. And the reason I say that is multiple, uh, multi-fold. One, um, I believe there needs to be a further discussion with Mr. Duchaine. And um Julie, our planner, and making sure that what he's requesting is truly gonna meet his needs. Um, you know, uh, if, if we were to consider something and adopt it and he was ten feet short of a setback. That would be a bad situation. Um, you know, or if we're not willing to consider anything, that's another thing. But he, you know, and until we know uh more details there. Uh, I will say that the movement with us designating certain park area uh in, in a certain size. Uh, moves us to be able to consider something like this. This is uh actually about a third of an acre, uh, eight thousand square feet. This is a very, very, very small little segment. Uh, it'll bring him, you know, he, he has said. It'll bring a million dollars worth of investment into the business and uh they will have to have additional employees. Um, you know, I guess, is the board open to looking at and considering this with more data? Cause obviously we don't have the data. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, so I was kind of surprised that because you said it was a formal request, that there was no dollar amount included for a purchase of price. And um, two other questions. I'm wondering, because it's a manufacturing business. Um, and it's in uh not zoned for manufacturing, is that it's a non-conforming use, we'll have to go for a variance before the Z B A? No?
It, it, no, the, the, the business, um. It, it's a lot, wow, I'm trying to remember what Julie called it. I can't answer that question. I need Julie to answer it, just to make sure I don't put my, you know. Um, and I don't, I see Mr. Lippens is on, but I don't think that uh he would be, I don't know if he knows enough about this property. To be able to answer that.
Okay, so I'm assuming that he's investigated either going up or going uh east with the building.
Correct. And, and, and to deal with the trucks that are there that unload and load. And the setbacks that are required and stuff. This was, you know, he even looked at going north and, and uh, you know. But the, I think the reason there wasn't a dollar figure attached is um, Mr. Ains and I didn't even know if there was a willingness. On the part of the township to consider it. And I guess that's the question is, is, is there a willingness? Uh, and, and I'm not saying a formal willingness. Is there a general consensus that if he presents, if something is feasible? And he presents it, is it something we're willing to, to consider selling a, a small portion of that property? Mr. Moko?
I would say we'd be crazy not to look at it or consider it. A business has been here that long. Uh, and employs local people, pays plenty of property tax. We would be crazy not to look at it. And if, if, if it's not feasible, I, I would not be opposed to trying to help them find another local property. To keep business in town.
Yeah, I mean, this is a flagship product out of Northfield Township.
Absolutely.
We haven't uh, we haven't done a tremendous amount to, to pay highlight to those things. But uh certainly uh, Al Dente Pasta's been around here a long time. And uh they've made quite a name for themselves, uh, definitely. Um, Ms. Zelenak, did you have something or?
Yes, I, I um, I'm willing to continue the discussion with them. And as you say, I think you bring up. Um, you know, good points about making sure that it will fit so that we don't go too far down the path. I, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how much they're asking, other than a third. And my only question is, does that have any, would that potentially land lock any of the other portion of the property? Or is it small enough that it would not?
It's about a hu, it's a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so it probably would not then. It would make the other parts still accessible beyond, past that.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if I have.
Cause I'm, I'm thinking they're, they're extending out. And the other comment, um, and again, it's not that I'm not willing to continue the discussion. Have they talked with the business next to the tavern? Because if you look at the property. It's almost like the business next to the tavern makes a T and it's almost like that little piece might fit as well. It's just a thought, looking at the.
Yep.
Makeup. I was looking at it with the assessor today. And you, you know, his thought was potentially that would be a good piece too, because it's part of the T. I don't know if you know that white building comes down, goes kind of behind the parking lot of the tavern. And then connects to Al Dante. And it was like, maybe there would be an opportunity there. I'm not sure.
When we tried talking about that, he said it would have to change his entire manufacturing process because of where things are in the plan.
All right.
I haven't been in there, but.
Okay.
Uh, it's something I think that would be exhausted by Julie. I would hope that she would go through those questions with him.
Um, all right.
You know.
Very good.
You know, unless someone has huge objections, I would like to ask Mr. Ains to get with Mr. Duchaine. And, and Mary and Julie and have a uh kind of a pre-conceptual conversation about. Uh, make sure that it's gonna meet zoning, make sure that it's compatible. Make, you know, though, all those things. Make sure that what he's talking about in the building wise is enough to, to fit in there, those kind of things. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I would just say bring it back with more details and, and let them know we're, we'll consider fair market value. It's fifty thousand an acre out there.
Yeah, and, and, you know, this. Yeah, and we can, I mean, we can put a price, we can put a price on it when we decide to. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Ains, do you have any questions on that direction?
I just want to mention to the board, when I first met with him back in October, I believe it was. I did tell him what the appraised value was. And then both uh Mr. Dignan and I discussed that as well. We did discuss the issue of going north to go south, to go west. And it seemed like the west direction was gonna be the best for his uh operation. Um, but there's a, you know, we just want to make sure there was a willingness to uh to look at it. And I did advise the board in my report back in October, because I was just bringing to your attention the per issue. So you had time to think about it.
All right, then I think I have enough direction there. And I'll work with Mr. Ains to make sure that those connections do take place and we get things moving.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. The next is the authorization to take legal action for recovery of our earnest money. Uh, from the uh failed uh sale of seventy-five Barker.
Send a motion, Mr. Dignan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to proceed with legal action to recover the earnest money, not to exceed uh legal fees of one thousand dollars. Plus actual expenses incurred.
Or, um, Ms. Zelenak supported, okay.
I'll support.
Dignan motion, support by Zelenak. Anyone have any questions on this? All right, Ms. Manley, will you call the role, please?
Yeah, um, Moko.
Support.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Check?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much, guys. Next item is the authorization of the Public Safety Director to hire and fire employees under his direct supervision. Um, I'll make a motion to authorize the Public Safety Director to hire and fire employees that are direct reports to him.
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, support by Nelson?
Yep, I'll give it to him.
All right, Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, I have, just have one question. Uh, will that include uh promotions as well? Most of the promotions have to follow the process of the union contracts anyhow, so.
And are they within your budget? I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Otto?
The only thing that I would ask, um, and I would ask this of um the township manager as well. Is that just update the board on either the, either through a meeting or through an email of your intent to hire, fire. Or uh promote somebody.
I was thinking it would make it part of my monthly report, if that's.
Yeah, that's fine. And as long as it's part of your budget. That's, I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any other discussion? Mrs. Zelenak?
That was the only thing, and thank you, Mr. Wagner, is that for the um public, I, I'm glad to hear that you would put it in your report. So it's visible to them of people that you're hiring. So, a- as well as the board members. So that we know, you know, people in case we see them in the hallways and stuff. So I appreciate that. It'll go in the report. So thank you. That covers my question.
Any other discussion? If there is none, I'm gonna ask Ms. Manley to call the role, please.
Otto?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Check?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Have a good night. Uh, next item on the agenda is the fitness park proposal. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Otto to speak on that.
Okay. My cat is just destroying my office. Okay, so I wanna do a, just a, a little screen share here.
Sure.
To get myself. If I can find it. I'm gonna do it this way, cause it's not coming up the way I want it. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
You got it.
Okay. All right, so um, I wanted to give everybody just a brief um uh update in how we got to meet uh this group. Um, back in early December, Channel Four News. Statewide partnership with uh the National Fitness Campaign and Priority Health. I was watching the news that night. And uh, and uh because I've been in healthcare for a long time, the name Priority Health caught my interest. And started listening a little bit more intently. Um, Bishop is looking to install fifteen fitness courts across Michigan in twenty twenty-one. So I reached out to uh Steve, Ken, and for Delisle and asked, you know. If we should schedule a meeting with these people. Um, I reached out to them. They were willing to meet with us. And it was ba, actually rather quickly. So on December fourteenth, we had a meeting. And then again on January seventh. Um, I provided the board two presentations from both of those meetings. Um, and um, and the last meeting that we had, it was not available for our packet. Because we didn't get it until Friday. But to give you some background, uh, National Fitness Campaign, um, they are a company based out of San Francisco. Um, they're a social enterprise and a consulting firm. They partner with cities, schools, and state agencies. And their uh, their main priority is to plan, build, and fund active, healthy infrastructures. So there are currently twelve locations in Michigan that have fitness courts. And what we call N F C um is committing over six hundred thousand in Michigan. Um, in a national grant funding uh for the state of Michigan. Um, so out of that, um. So out of that, they are looking to partner with people. Unfortunately, and I'll go through this rather quickly. I'm going to go through this backwards instead of forwards. So they do have a very short window of which to apply for. Early applicant deadline was February 19th, but it's still open for to apply. But they need to know our answer by February 1st. Advance of the award announcement is going to be on March 1st. Submission to managing funds is going to be August 1st. And then they really truly want the program completed within 18 months from the award date. So if the award date was in March, they would be looking at June of next year, June or July of next year to have the fitness court completed. So I wanted to go through and really talk a little bit about how the funding is and everything. The total structure costs $150,000. This does not include what they call the concrete slab. So I will go in the wrong way.
I know it's.
Right here, right here, as you can see in this picture right here, this is what it it looks like. There's a concrete slab. And this is the part that they don't pay for, so we would have to do the concrete slab. They're the ones that put all the infrastructure, the equipment in on it. So really, we were estimating the the concrete slab. And that would be have to be at the township. The township would have to pay for that. Personally, was estimating anywhere between 30,000 to 50,000, not knowing the size of the concrete slab that we have to put in and what what the cost is. But I just slapped something down, thinking that that's probably what it would cost. Priority Health would contribute $50,000 to it. And then the township would have to match $100,000 to it. So really, what we're looking at is the township paying about $150,000 for a $200,000 project. So we did have, I did want to let everybody know. We did have a very, very, on the 7th, we did have a very, very candid discussion with Mike Cole, who is representative of the National Fitness Campaign. He understands that we're in our infancy with North Village and the park and the trail. We told them, I mean, we basically laid our cards on the table and said, wow, we would love to do something like this. And it and it and they felt that it also fit within their their assessment. So they did an evaluation of us and said that we would fit into their into a project that they would pick. We felt like it was putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, because we're not there yet. So through the discussion, he did tell us that if we don't make it this round, so this round is for February, they do have 2022 that they will be looking at starting in May of this year. So I wanted to just put it out there for everybody to talk about, ask questions. I really wasn't looking for a motion on this because I I know when Ken and I talked and Jennifer, we felt that this was kind of early. I know I I spoke to Nate about this and Janet and got their feedback. So I'm just going to open to the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Mr. Nelson?
So thank you, Jackie. That's a good presentation. Might I ask, like, my main concern for something like this, because this is really an awesome project? Where, who pays for the upkeep, like the long term upkeep? Because I could see when it comes to snow, like our roads or something like that, that that money keeps draining from us for the long term. And far eclipses even the cost of the project in the short term. And and just so, do we have like an estimate in terms of upkeep per year or something like that? That cost would really be helpful in me making a decision about this in the long run.
I mean, he he spoke a little bit to that when when he talked. I mean, you know, all of this stuff is is meant to survive decades. And and it's very, very little moving parts. It's it's, you know, you know, it it's, you know, the way they have it zoned and the things, you know, it but certainly, no matter what it is, you're going to have some upkeep. You know, there is touch up paint that they provide to you. Because if you get something that's, you know, scratched and it's metal, you're going to want to, you know, take care of it. You know, I could speak a little bit more on the pad. He said that he has had communities where the pad has gone in for as little as 8,000. He said it probably averages about 30,000, 35,000.
And Ken, what you're talking about pad is the concrete.
The concrete, yeah, the concrete infrastructure. Yep. So it depends on a couple of things. It depends on if you catch the concrete guy in a good mood when he agrees to do it for the community. You know, that kind of thing. But, Mr. Nelson, yes?
Uh, just a quick follow up question to that, then.
This is what it looks like, Josh.
Okay, okay, that's awesome. If we were to do something like this, too, down the road, I'm just putting this out there now. I may be sending out a postcard to the public again, to at least the locals, local area, to make sure that they know it's available. I'd hate to put, like, spend the money of putting something like this in and people not know about it, because that's one of the things I think people around here, they don't know what our facilities are. So I I would just stress the importance of making it known that we have this if we were to do something like this down the road.
And I think their idea is you build campaign awareness as you work at raising some of the money to cover it from the public. You you build campaign awareness of it. Yes, Ms. Chick?
So I have seen multiple times online where people have asked for suggestions for what they'd like to see at the park area. And one of them was an outdoor fitness court. They have one in Hamburg. It does not look like that, but it's basically on the same idea or form. So I think that's something that would be that the public would probably like and utilize. And it looks like if I read the information correctly, I think the pad's like 36 by 36. Yeah, okay, so whatever that amount costs.
About half a tennis court.
So you'd like like five inches of concrete, you know, to support whatever they're putting on there. But anyway, I I would guess that the estimate for the cost would be close to 30,000 for the concrete. So but we don't know. But anyway, I love the idea. Funding is going to be the big issue. So if we can find the funding for it, I'm on board.
One thing, too, that they that they do share, and I'll switch it over to this side, is that they do talk about that the whole 100,000 does not need to come exactly from from the township. It can from local sponsors. It can come from partnerships. So this is something that we could put together. If we do decide to wait until 2022 for this and work with them starting in May, this may be something that we start looking for partnerships to help fund this. So when we're they're ready to issue out the application for next year, we'll be ready for the funding.
Well, I think that's probably a good plan because it the park area is not going to be developed completely within a year. It's going to be done in phases, I would assume, because of the cost involved. So, yeah, I would think that it's a more prudent in any way to look out into 2022. And we'd have more of a park design already established so we could fit it in.
Right. And this is one thing that I didn't know is, you know, the one thing I would like to know is, where would we put this? Right now, we don't have an idea of where we would put it.
Exactly.
So I think if we could, when we start doing our design, and we told them, we don't even have a park design. So it it's almost like you're getting, we have something that's given to us, but we can't do anything with it. So.
And I saw Mr. Lippens was on, I don't know if he's still there or not. But when a park design is done, we'd have to hire somebody to do that, and they could incorporate that into the design.
Right.
There's lots of options there. I mean, the the one thing, you know, we also have to make sure that we get put in our plans and keep in our minds, regardless, is as we develop park plans and park facilities, we are going to have maintenance and responsibilities of upkeeping. And we we are growing, and it it comes up fast. And, you know, we already have stuff that has to be up kept on the Barker Road, non-motorized path. You know, I I and and I'm not saying this to any to have any, you know, shade thrown on any previous administrations. But in the decades since we built the senior center, we didn't maintain our light posts.
No.
And they fell down. They, some of them fell down literally because they weren't maintained. And I got to be honest, the sidewalk lights out front in front of the public safety building don't look all that great. And they're dilapidated as well. So us having a not only a budget, but you're going to have to have people, somebody to 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 oversee this maintenance stuff. So that'll be a challenge for us to take as we move forward. Mr. Nelson?
I'm just following up on that. I think it's also important to consider liability down the road as well. We definitely need someone to maintain our stuff. Otherwise, say, say something breaks even on even on this, that's on us.
Because it's not maintained.
If it if it's not maintained, we're going to be paying bigger charges down the road when something
Right.
coming back to us. And it's our fault. I I definitely think, yeah, we definitely need to look into that as soon as possible, especially, maybe even before we have a full park plan. Just need need someone to do our maintenance.
We do. And 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 don't get me wrong, I know our, I know we do have staff that work for us. It it generally has fallen upon staff over at the sewer plant to come fix things when it breaks and do things. And they've been incredibly generous and very helpful in many, many aspects. And we're forever grateful for that. But it sounds like we we will address that, and it'll be one of our disciplines to find a way to to keep our our facilities looking great and in in good shape. So but I, you know, I think this was a great thing to to present, to show you guys. I really think next year, if it if it's something that's within the scope of the park plan, it can be looked at for the when I say next year, for the 2022 grant period. So, which is not that far away.
No, really, it wasn't. And and I think the four of us were rather surprised when he said, we're going to start doing, we're going to start working on 2022. In May, he offered that. And we found, okay, I was ready to say the door is shut, and he opened the door again for us. So.
Right. So anything more?
I'd like to do, though, is to just follow up with Mike Cole and let him know what the board has decided that we would like to move forward with it, but it can't be this year. And these are the steps that need to happen before we move forward with this.
Mr. Moco?
Yeah, I just think Jackie, I think this is, this is great. There's little progress going on here. But I think we need to make it clear that, you know, tonight was the first step. We designated 10 to 12 acres for the park. You know, now we need to get the get the builders in here, whether it's Livonia Builders or someone else. And then we need to get get the park defined as far as we don't even have a parking lot for this place structure.
Exactly.
So key, I I think I think it's great that you've made the contact and made that in 2022. Whether it turns into, I think, a miracle if we're ready by 20, by next year with with it. But I mean, 2022 could lead to 2023, and I think this would be a great asset to the community. So thank you for going out and looking at this. But, yeah, I just, you know, it's, I I don't think it's something that's going to happen until we actually break some ground on some other things at the at the Van Kellerman property.
And they are very much aware that we did not define the park yet. I mean, they they knew all that. We were very honest with them.
Good, good deal.
Mr. Dignan, could I make another comment?
Certainly.
I wanted to mention that he said the other day that they have a structure like this already installed in in Canton Township.
Yeah.
So there is one close that people could go see and sort of kick the tires and evaluate what it is.
And that was.
Whereabouts, Mr. Ains?
Developer agreement.
Wait, whereabouts is it, Mr. Ains, in Canton? Do you have any location?
Yes, we do, but it'd be best if we sent it out to the boards after this.
Thank you.
So you could see.
That would be great.
Or whatever.
Yeah, and that was put in as part of a partnership development agreement between Canton. I don't know if it was Canton Township, the developer that was building the residential development there and their Parks and Rec Group. So.
Right.
You know, opportunities are out there. Just we'd have to figure it out and see if it's something that fits in and go from there. But excellent. Thank you for your work on this, Ms. Otto.
I have a question. Sure. Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Supervisor. So, Ms. Otto, did the Parks and Rec see this as well?
Jennifer passed this out to the Parks and Rec Board and asked them to attend.
Okay. Pardon me?
Jennifer.
I missed that last part.
Jennifer passed the same presentation in my memo out to the board and asked them to attend tonight, if they could.
Oh, okay. And and so have they, did they make a recommendation?
Yeah, if we do anything like this, it is going to go to the it is going to go through the Parks and Rec Board, Jennifer.
Okay. Okay. All right, great. Everybody else pretty much covered all my other questions, so thank you.
There's a lot of stuff that has to happen before.
We even get to that.
We can't even get to this as even, you know, option consideration. But all right, if there is nothing more, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. That is the discussion of regarding independent contractors. And we're going back to Ms. Otto.
I'm going to stop sharing them.
I was, I thought you were going to have a presentation on that.
No, no. But I I think that what I wanted to discuss is that we had it probably since 2018 that we had we had three three areas in our township that needed to get into alignment with our independent contractor policy. Our, according to our employee guidelines or our employee policy, if you're an independent contractor, you have to have a contract with the township. So we have three of them. One is our janitor service. While they're viewed as an employee, that person also brings on additional people to with the services. So when we met back in 2008, the our legal, our labor attorney said, really, this person would be considered a contractor and not an employee. So so I don't know where we are with that. I think we still employ this person as an employee. And this person still includes other people in helping with the janitorial services. But I don't know where we're at with that. We also have our. Uh, but I don't know where we're at with that. We also have our videographer who, um, does, who, uh, we have always. Independent contractor and, but we don't have a contract with that person. Um, and also with our stenographer, um, that one is also considered an independent contractor, but we don't have a contract with them. These are things that we need to buckle. We have to button them up. We, we have pushed, we have pushed it out for so long and I just wanna, uh, ask, uh, Steve where we are at with them and then decide what are the next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. I'm gonna go to Mr. Ains and then go to Ms. Check.
Let me take the easiest one first, and that's, uh, the stenographer. Uh, she is an independent contractor. She's very clear. She doesn't wanna be an employee. She serves other governmental or housing units to take minutes. She provides her own equipment. Um, she bills us, so on. The biggest issue with her is that our provisions, as outlined by the, uh, labor attorney, required them to have a large amount of insurance coverage, uh, to protect the township. And basically she can't afford to do that and continue doing the work for the township. Cause we're not paying enough. So what had been discussed at one point was the possibility that the township could, uh, help secure the, the insurance coverage and, uh, pay for that as a separate, uh, aspect of it. Uh, basically it'd be a pass through where you'd pay so much a year for her to cover her insurance and then she could be the one contracting with insurance. Uh, we do have, uh, a release from her that was signed back in November 219, I believe. That does indicate that she's, uh, not eligible for her workers' compensation through the township. And she recognizes it and it's a form that's been approved by her insurance company. Uh, so we got in partway with that. Uh, the second one is with the videographer and he's refused to discuss it. Uh, doesn't feel it's needed. And, uh, there's a lot of aspects to that. Um, and I had talked about possibly making a position, but I'm not comfortable with that. And I've talked to, uh, Mr. Dignan's son about the, uh, video systems there in the boardroom and the, uh, you know, the, the sound system and so on. It seems to me you need a major change anyway to, uh, make that more usable by the board and the public. And therefore you probably need to have somebody with the expertise to, uh, spec that out. And, uh, and see if, uh, it's something that would be, uh, more feasible with a different arrangement. Um, and the third one, uh, I've talked to, uh, the janitor. She is a part-time person. She does bring other people on board, uh, that are family members. And she refuses to be an independent contractor and she refuses to, uh, be incorporate to, uh, to handle them. So, um, you know, those are all separate distinct issues that I think needs to be talked further with either the personnel committee or some other committee of the board. So we can get more into depth with this. Um, otherwise you can just say, yeah, you have to be an independent contractor or else by a certain date.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, um, this issue has been ongoing for at least two, possibly three years, Jackie. I can't remember how bad, how far back.
2018.
Yeah, that it get resolved and it has not gotten resolved. Um, any employer by now would have made a decision that it, it either comply with what the township needs or you don't work for the township. I don't think that there should be any kind of, um, uh, I don't wanna say it. Anyway, that, whatever our attorney determines we should be doing to make this a proper, uh, uh, business or contract with an independent contractor employer, we need to do it tomorrow. Uh, I don't think there's any need to go into depth or go to the personnel committee. We have a human resources person that should be handled at that level with the attorney, say, you either do this or we can't use you anymore. It's, I don't know that it's any more difficult than that. I appreciate the people that work for us, but they can't dictate to the township what their arrangement's going to be.
I, I guess, I, I, I as an independent contractor and I have been for 30 years, uh, in, in various capacities, bonding is not that expensive to be bonded. Uh, bonded and insured is, is pretty standard practice. Any insurance guy out there can give you, can, can write you a policy to be bonded. Um, uh, I, I've looked at the bills. I'm not concerned about the cost of insurance. I've seen what we pay, uh, for these services. And, uh, you know, it, it, you know, if you gotta work at one meeting a year to cover your bond, you, that's what you do. I mean, we all, we all have expenses in our business. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm almost at a point of, uh, proposing that we just put an RFP out. Or crest for, for, or, you know, RFQ, uh, that we're looking for, uh, businesses to do this. You must be bonded. You must be insured. You must be, you must carry, you know, you, you have to carry workers' compensation on your employees unless you are an independent sole proprietor, that you're the only person working for your company. And you were willing to sign a contract. Uh, uh, that, that's, it's that simple. Um, I think Jackie can speak a little bit to the, uh, simplicity of some of these new Zoom rooms and things. Things where you can almost turn a key. You go in, you hit a button and boom, it goes on live. It goes out. I mean, it sets up. There, there's, there's, there's calls. I mean, we need to be and, and exploring these video options that require little to no, uh, interaction on the part of having to have a, a staff member that we're paying, um, you know, $85 an hour too. That's, 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 it's just, those kind of rates are, are, uh, that, those are extremely high for someone to, uh, sit behind a, a screen and watch a video, uh, stream go out. Ms. Otto?
I can also share that even before COVID hit, um, in, in our company, we were using Zoom, uh, even prior. Uh, we had to train a large groups of people where we only had training rooms that only staffed about 30 people in each room. And we were looking at hundreds of people at any given time. So we had to use the Zoom equipment for one trainer to be in one room. And, uh, they were training in multiple rooms in order to do this. So, um, Zoom can work even when we are live, uh, when we are on site. And, uh, and we can continue to use the same technology, but only in a different way.
Oh, can I just make one more comment about the sound system? I had asked, um, and I don't know if anybody followed up on it, to contact, uh, Green Oak about their sound system and, 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 and what they have because that was awesome. It might.
With our sound comes down to the same thing. It's been for a long, long time. And that is, we do not have a, um, processor to handle the number of channels. We're, we're splicing in channels for, for our, for our microphones. We just need to get the dollar figure on it. But I wanna do it as a comprehensive upgrade to make sure that we address all the issues. You know, we addressed having cameras and proper cameras, the last upgrade when they built the boardroom. And, and now we've got to, let's just look at it all and, and, and bring a proposal to the board to, to address.
Great.
So, um, you know, I, I will say, uh, you know, some of these folks we've had contract or we've had arrangements with for a long time. I think it's important that, uh, we sit down with them and explain the legal requirements. I mean, it, this isn't complicated. It's, these are gonna be the legal requirements that are gonna allow you to work as an independent contractor for us. Is this something you can agree to? If the answer's no, then we'll have to look somewhere else. And it's that easy. It's not a, you know, it's not a, a big, it, it, it's simple.
That's what I'm saying. Yep.
I, I don't think there's any argument on this. The, the tail can't wag the dog. If you're gonna be in, if you're gonna work as a subcontractor, as a sole proprietor or any other way, uh, you have to, we, we have to have a independent contractor agreement. Do we? That's a question I had for Steve. Does the township have an independent contractor agreement? And if we do, there's absolutely no reason. I mean, they, I hate to say it. I know these people that, uh, have been doing a good job for many years, but sign it or we have to move on. We can't let them dictate us. So, or to the town, I should say. It's just not fair to anybody.
Uh, actually, when I came in the summer of 217, you'd been talking about it before that.
Right.
And then you had your labor attorney prepare drafts of what would be, what she felt was the, the appropriate, uh, contractual language. But that's where it, uh, created issues. Uh, basically you didn't have the expertise on my part to bid for these kind of technological things. I can bid custodial, but I, I can't do the, uh, the audio visual. So, and the sound system and so on. So with Ken coming on board as your supervisor, uh, I had hopes that he would be able to assist in doing that type of thing. So we could automate.
I did it for a lot of years. So at least, at least, uh, enough to know if someone's blowing smoke, right? I mean, that's, that's the, that's a big part of it. But no, I mean, you know, I, I know our recording secretary's been with us a very long time and, and done a stellar job. And I wanna make sure that we, um, be fair to her and give her a fair opportunity to understand where we are at. And, uh, uh, she's very reasonable, I think. So let's, uh, let's work on that. I'll, I'll work with Mr. Ains on that as well. And, uh.
So what parts do you want to do? Personnel committee to take on anything? Or did you want to work on this yourself or?
Well, I think that, um, I'm willing to, it's two things. Audio, video, audio, video, stuff like that. I think we just have to figure out where we're gonna be at. And, and I'm willing to, to take that, at least the initial investigations into that on. The, the contractor stuff, that's, uh, I mean, that, I.
It's Mr. Ains's issue.
Personnel committee or does it have to just be Mr. Ains?
It's well, the, the board gave it over to Mr. Ains. I mean, that's what it was. It was, it was, we asked him to take care of it. And I think the board needs to support Mr. Ains in saying, however he takes care of it, we support him.
Okay, I think, I think we support him, but I'd like a deadline. I would like to have this resolved within 30 days, one way or another.
Well, why don't we do this? Um, I mean, how much time do you wanna give the contractors to work with Mr. Ains to have a, a signed agreement with the township?
Well, by the next board meeting.
Well, 26th is.
I, I'd say within 30 days.
I would say 30 days.
Yeah.
These, this contract, the con, independent contract agreement, each one of them have, has it already. Um, it's, they're not, it's not that difficult. It's not even that long. I think it's only like two or three pages.
Okay. Ms. Ains, do you have any concerns with that?
She prepared them for the videographer and the stenographer. I'll have to talk to her because I don't have it prepared by her specifically for the custodial, but we can do that. I did wanna mention to you to clarify further, um, you have a couple of different arrangements. So you're not misunderstanding going beyond these three people. Uh, your building department, you have a contract with Pittsfield Township to provide the building official and any of the building inspectors. But you do have independent contractor agreements in place already with the mechanical, the plumbing and the, uh, electrical inspectors. So those are in place.
The one with the build, the one with, uh, Pittsfield Township, we don't need individual contracts with their. It doesn't have to be with Pittsfield.
No, we don't need it because I want everybody to understand you have a contract, the same as with your assessors. They're under contract cause the township has contract with the assessing firm. Uh, but just in case you have other people have questions about it, but.
Right, and those entities are bonded and insured. So we don't have that concern. They're bonded and insured. So we don't have a, that, you know, they're, they're carrying workers' comp on their employees. We, you know, we can be assured of that. You know, the, the concern is, is someone bringing in other people and working for the township and no one has workers' compensation and someone gets hurt. We're on the hook. We're on the hook and we could be on the hook for fines.
Right.
I understand. I just wanted to give you the fuller picture. So you, if anybody said, well, what about the building inspector or the building official or even the assessors? Uh, that they all have unique situations.
Yeah, and I, I just read the question by, uh, Lisa too. If you are an independent contractor and you are the sole person in that contract, in that, um, providing that service, that you don't have any other employees, uh, workers' compensation, you don't need workers' compensation. That is, um, according to the state of Michigan, you don't have to have workers' compensation on yourself if you're an individual con, uh, contractor.
And that's the form that she.
Yeah, so some of this language in the contract, it has to be specific to you as the independent contractor. So say like our assessor department where they have, they have multiple people that provide that service. They do have workers' compensation on them.
Yes.
Alright, Ms. Chick?
Yep, so I'd like to make a motion to direct, um, township manager, uh, Mr. Ains to work with those people that, um, need to be either designated as an independent contractor or an employee and get those, uh, documents signed within 30 days.
Okay.
I support.
Alright, motion by Chick, supported by Moko. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Otto?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chick, for that motion. Alright, moving on.
Mister, Mister Dignan, I have a question. And just as we talk about the something different. How, how are the volunteers handled at the community center? I mean, they're volunteers. I mean, Meals on Wheels. Don't we have a lot of volunteers that work there? Does that propose any liability to the township if they were to get hurt?
Well, my understanding is that this waiver form was prepared by your insurance company for any volunteer to sign. I'd have to talk to Jennifer as to who, you know, if we have a complete on the people at the, uh, Meals on Wheels and so forth.
And I don't know if they're really volunteering for the community center or they're volunteering for the Meals on Wheels program. Maybe Mr. Wagner just.
I mean, that's one example. I mean, I know that, sorry, sorry, Mr. Dignan.
Mr. Wagner, you just popped on.
Yeah, um, so we dealt with volunteers probably maybe five or six years ago, when we had several volunteers that would come and open the public safety building for tornado warnings.
Mm-hmm.
Act with the insurance company, uh, to make sure that they were covered liability. And as long as they were, at that time, as long as they were designated volunteers, then they were covered.
From our general liability?
Right.
Yeah, I kinda.
Do they sign a form?
You know, at that time, we didn't have them sign a form, but they were voted on at a board meeting as volunteers for the, for the.
So would we, would we have to do something similar to volunteers at the community center? I mean, so right now it's Meal on, on Wheels, but when the community center is open and sometimes not, even with its closed, you know, people volunteer. And does that, how do we handle that? Something to think about.
I mean, it, it, it's a legal, but you're gonna have volunteers.
I'll also give the board a copy of this blank form we use that is for, uh, uh, people to sign off on the workers' comp.
Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, I think, you know, it could be a concern at the community center too. It's something to look at.
Thank you, Ms. Zelen.
Okay.
Alright, um. All right. The next item on the agenda is trustee and liaison reports. Um, I didn't have a written report. I, I, cause I, basically, uh, I reported to you that I had had a conversation with Danny, uh, from, uh, Livonia Builders. And I think that, uh, Mr. Ains, uh, and, uh, Mr. Fink, uh, possibly myself may, uh, have a conversation in the very near future with him again. I'm excited to report that, uh, things are, are moving through the system in regards to, um, Mr. Gro now and the North Territorial Whitmore Lake Road, uh, PUD project. And will make its way to the planning commission, uh, when appropriate. We have a lot of activity in downtown. I don't know if any of you have noticed, but, uh, you've got building upon building being renovated. You've got, uh, uh, lots of people looking around town, uh, for places. As a matter of fact, there was a, uh, an individual, uh, walking downtown today, looking for places for a possible restaurant establishment or food establishment. And, and, you know, so, uh, the buzz is going around. Um, you know, everybody's, uh, getting excited about things. So, uh, when I have something more to report, uh, you know, what I hear, I definitely have been sending, uh, when appropriate, people to the planner or the, or rather to Mary Bird more so, so that she can get them the proper information to, to go through there, to go through our processes. So, uh, that's all I have. Uh, Ms. Zelena, treasures report. Is there anything, um, beyond what you?
Yeah, I just wanted to let know people, I do actually, I transferred the funds today from First National Bank to level one, the three million eight hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. So that was transferred to level one today.
Thank you. Good that. Um, Ms. Manley, anything to add?
Um, nope, nothing additional to the report.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Chick, planning commissioner?
Yeah, I have a quick, did we vote to approve the payment of the bills?
Yes.
That wasn't part of the consent.
It was in the consent.
Okay. All right. I'm usually, I'm used to it being separate. So I, I, I put in my planning commission report. If anybody's got any questions, you know, go ahead.
All right. There is no ZBA report. So look for that in the future. Parks and Rec Board, uh, Ms. Otto, anything else to add to?
No, I think I'm good. Other than on Parks and Rec, um, to the public, um, you have until January twenty-sixth. Put your comments in, um, uh, in regards to the master plan.
I see Mr. Lippens is here. Did he want to speak on anything on the Parks and Rec?
Did he? I don't know that.
Is he not there?
Mr. Lippens, are you actually there?
I had asked, been asked by Jennifer whether to allow him to be here if it was needed. I assume he didn't feel there was a need.
Okay.
So I don't think he's here.
Yeah.
Uh, and when you get, when you get a minute, I wanted to mention a couple of other things if we could.
Yeah, well, well, I'll, I'll make sure that we have you on this part of clarification stuff. Um, Land Preservation Committee, Ms. Alnuck, anything to add?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Announcements, uh, the next meeting of the, uh, board of trustees will be on the twenty-sixth, right? Yeah. January twenty-sixth. Um, petitions and communications, if there is anyone, I have a member of the public that would like to speak. Let me, go ahead.
Marissa? Hi, it's Marissa on thirty-two Chum Drive. Uh, I actually saw my hand raised.
Can't hear you, Marissa.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Much better.
All right, great. Sorry, it's Marissa Prisnet, thirty-two Chum Drive. Um, I have,
Oh, we lost you again.
I had my hand raised. Come on now.
Yep.
Good. All right, sorry. I had my hand raised because you were talking about Meals on Wheels. Um, and I'm a volunteer for Meals on Wheels and that, uh, program is run through Washtenaw County. Um, and we did have to sign waivers which ensure us for that and a background check and everything, especially if you're driving the car. Um, I also believe that the, um, the, the women who are helping in the kitchen to heat, reheat those meals and get them prepared. And when they were doing the in-house lunches, um, also had to be cleared, uh, through the county. I cannot, however, speak to other volunteers that go into the community center. Um, but you should be covered for Meals on Wheels at least, which is the big liability, obviously, with people driving their cars.
Right.
Um, so I really actually wasn't even intending to speak. I had raised my hand when y'all were talking about that. Um, so that's all I had to add.
Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, welcome to the, uh, here on River Watershed Council, uh, as our representative.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. All right. We do have another individual. New zoning board of appeals member, Mr. Only.
Yes, thank you. Adam Only, nine, three, one, five Lakewood Court. Um, just thank the board for the vote of confidence, the seven of, for the, um, appointment. Uh, also be applying for the People's Express and Northfield Human Services Board, uh, here at the end of this week as they have an opening also, so. Uh, just a question about the al dente purchasing property. Um, I don't know if the township, if it's even possible, but if you have a food manufacturing company that's looking to expand their manufacturing, what's the need for a food manufacturing company to have lakefront property? Maybe it could be a property exchange. Um, if we're looking to put a waterfront park there, um, any additional waterfront property that the township has, I think would be, you know, great benefit to the township. Maybe even more than the, you know, forty or fifty thousand dollars that we could get from it. Um, like many people have said, they're not making any more lakefront property. So, um, if, if they're really looking to focus on manufacturing, I know Rick's Bake Shack's no longer there. So it's kind of pointing in the direction that they're not as focused on, um, lake revenue. Um, so maybe that's a discussion that could take place with them also. Um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Roney. All right. If there's, is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Is anyone else, please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone else. All right. We'll go on to, um, start with board member comments and, uh, clarifications. Uh, Mr. Ains, go right ahead, please.
Yeah. The first thing I wanted to mention to the public is that the board had approved getting the update to the website. And that has been ongoing and, uh, is underway. And we expect that will be in place, uh, probably within the next several weeks. Uh, so hopefully it'll be a vast improvement over what we've had. So the board had approved not just, uh, uh, redoing it, but to expand on it and let it have more capability for you. So I think the board has, uh, been wanting to do that for a long time as well as the public. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I talked to Mr. Digman about is on the, uh, lakefront property, the North Village property. Uh, at one time you had set a meeting last year and then the COVID wrecked it as far as having a meeting just on the lakefront property and having the public input. And I suggested to the supervisor that trying to fit this topic into your regular board meeting, uh, is very difficult because of the time it would take and how it's affecting other items. So I was recommending to him that you have a special meeting just for this purpose. And if the board did want to expand it to notify the public, then that it would be good if you could pick a date or a month at least where you want to do it. So that committee of communications could work on it.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. Miss, and, uh, we'll go to Ms. Chick.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Mr. Ains' comment. We actually had a date scheduled for a town hall meeting just for the public, and that was April seventh and correct. Um, it was disrupted. So I think that we absolutely should set a, um, date specifically for a town hall meeting for the public to participate in so they can give their input on what they'd like to see happen at the, at the park area. So, um, do you have my comments now or you want to?
Sure. No, you go right ahead.
All right. Uh, so I also wanted to say that I'm going to, on the, uh, next agenda, put in, um, uh, uh, discussion item on the communication plan, which would include, uh, okay. All right. And then, uh, wanted to, number three, uh, tell Nate that I like his background. But, um, my other comment is, and I don't know if this is the right place to do this, or if it should go on the next agenda and well, uh, because we did have an instance, a couple of meetings ago where the board would have liked to have the attorney present at the, um, meeting to talk about a contract that was, um, on the agenda. So I'm thinking, uh, in the instance, um, the, the presence of the attorney at a meeting would be helpful to the board members that I, I would like to make a motion to either poll the members uh, or designate three board members to make that decision so that in everybody, uh, that it's not done by administration or any one person that the board decides whether or not an attorney is needed at a meeting, if there was something on the agenda that the attorney should be present or, uh, would, the board would like him to be present. So I can make that at the next meeting. I'm just letting you know that that's what I'm going to do.
Okay. I'll put that on. Yeah. I, I, I think it's a, a good discussion. I, and I think it's, and I have no problem. I think, uh, I think the idea of designating three board members, uh, you know, and maybe the township manager to, 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 that'd probably be great when we have something that is of a legal nature.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Chick. All right.
I would like to clarify though, uh, Mr. Fink had talked to me earlier about whether he was needed. The arrangement I worked out with him was that he would be on call, that if the board had any questions or concerns, I could call him up. He would be able to access because he was put in as a member, uh, if it was needed. So that's kind of an effort he's been making to minimize your costs. But, uh, you know, we can do it whatever way the board would like to do.
Sure. I know he's also mentioned that, uh, you know, he, he, when there's an item coming up, if you've got legal questions, you can reach out to him as a board member, uh, which you can, uh, because, you know, it's like anybody, do you want your attorney to make, to, to, to give you an answer in public? You know, and, and you, we run a risk when we do that.
Right. Well, for, you know, for board members, sometimes those questions come up at a meeting. So, you know, we don't always have them had a time. I appreciate, uh, actually the info, that all of the board members' input at meetings because as smart as we all think we are, we don't know everything and then we feed off of each other. So it's good information from everybody. Thank you. And, uh, I, uh, also want to congratulate all the appointees. That's all.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Chick. Ms. Manley?
I'm good.
Okay. No problem. Ms. Otto?
Other comments?
I just wanted to congratulate all the appointees and thank you for stepping up and, uh, participating, uh, in township business.
Awesome. Mr. Nelson?
I have no comments except to congratulate the new appointees. I'm happy it was such an easy decision.
Excellent. Mr. Moko?
Uh, thank you for Marissa, uh, for, uh, explaining the Meals on Wheels, working through Washtenaw County. And, uh, congrats to all the appointees and, uh, Adam, I look forward to working with you on the ZBA. That's, uh, that's all I got. Let's keep it rolling.
Awesome. And Ms. Zelenak?
But again, I, like everybody else, thank everybody for volunteering. It really does take a lot of people to run the township. It's not just obviously the board members. And I would like to sit, um, thank Mr. Prisnet, um, for the information on Meals on Wheels. And, uh, Mr. Only, as far as his comments, as well as maybe there is a property trade, something to think about. I think that's a very good comment. So thank you, everyone.
Absolutely. Uh, there is, uh, I, I've got just a couple of things here. Uh, one, I want to make sure to, uh, ask Mr. Ains to, um, have Jennifer reach out to the new members of the various, uh, boards and to make sure to provide them training materials that are needed. Any information on upcoming training that, uh, that may benefit them? Uh, I know that, uh, uh, we've got a couple of members that are, uh, anxious to serve and want to make sure that they're doing the best job they can. So, uh, we need to make sure. Also, um, I don't know if any of our board members have not been able to have, if you've all been able to get the information you've needed for, uh, your training. But, uh, if you have not, please reach out to Jennifer and make sure that, uh, you are able to, to get that information. Uh, you know, the one thing, uh, that's kind of most important or the, it's kind of like the Bible of townships. It is the,
Ordnance.
Well,
No.
Red book, right? The, uh, authorities and responsibilities of Michigan townships. This is, this is, uh, MTA calls it the, the township Bible. Um, you know, it, it, remember, there's more people under township governance in this state than any other type of governance. So, um, it's the, it is truly the closest to the people. So that, that is us. Let's see. Oh, one other thing. Um, and I'll try to have Mr. Ains send this out. But, um, I was made aware by a resident that a beachfront is on Wald Lake that is two hundred feet, public beach. It's two hundred feet, two hundred lineal feet of beachfront. It's very interesting. We have two hundred lineal feet of waterfront. Just, you know, it is interesting and it's interesting to take a Google Maps satellite view of it and look at it. Um, so, uh, I'll have him send out the information on that and, uh, just take a look at it. It's, uh, you know, because, uh, certainly the, you know, as Parks and Rec looks at things, the other question really came up of, can that really be that? And while this gives you an idea of what that looks like. So, uh, that's all I have. Uh, if there's nothing else, would someone like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support.
Motion by Chick, support by Otto. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
And bye.
Made me go over by a half hour. No, I'm just kidding.
Dang it.
Dang it. No, we had a lot, we had a lot on the,
That was,
Talk to you guys soon.
Thank you.
See you, Nate. Hi, Steve. Have a good night.
You too, Ken. Thank you.